Good evening, everybody. We'd love to welcome you all to the meeting this evening. I'm going to call to order the regular board meeting. The trustees of the East Central Independent School, September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, beginning at six thirty. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ginger Prison, huh?
Here.
Victor Carza?
Here.
John Massenell? James Longley?
Here.
Alvin Keller here. Emilio Barazza?
I'm here.
And Woody Travers?
Here, sir.
Of course.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda was a parent's list which is on. Who do we have?
Trustees. There's a lot of entries in the house. Turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mr. Toscato and President 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 and Board of Trustees. Tonight, we have some amazing patrons ready to represent a lot of the East Central Board meeting. Tonight, we have fifth grader Joey Benferradis say her prayer, and fifth grader Anthony Henderson, and fourth grader Abigail McCain helping with the process. Please stand and bow your head.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Our Constitution to lead Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Today, we have our salon choir led by high arts teacher Asada McCain say for this evening. Today, we have Neil St. Leon Betts, Erin Wahado, Charin Martinez, Esperala Pizbadesma, Marisol Cortizbadesma, Casey Gayet Salzelo, Julie Fatinas, Joey Ann Hernandez, Jasmine Flores, Aurora Sapsosa, Luis Puente, Jasmin Rojed, Anthony Henderson, Abigail McCain, Cianojano, Nicolette Florentine, Sienna Blackies, Arturo Gonzalez, Desiree Zepeda, Coraline Hernandez, Anna Serman, Lesta Gonzalez, and Jimena Rios. The choir will be singing "De Colores." "De Colores," meaning "of colors," is a traditional folk song that is well-known throughout the state of speaking world. The song was brought to the Americas from Spain during the sixteenth century. In other times, the song frequently appeared in collections for children's songs.
All the colors, all the colors take light in the hills and the hills and the springtime. All the colors, all the colors make shine on the birdies that light from afar. All the colors, all the colors take light in the wrinkles and lines of the sky. It's these colors that must not color for our hearts and make everything also alive. It's these colors that must not color for our hearts and make everything also alive. De colores, de colores, the new friends of the angels in the primavera. De colores, de colores, the little starlight that comes from the far. De colores, de colores, the little heart to eat that we must eat. And for so long, there's a more than a summer, there's a much more than a summer. And for so long, there's a more than a summer, there's a much more than a summer.
We want to invite to this my college miss. If you are a proud member or friend of these amazing teachers and students, please stand up and be a part of this evening.
Thank you, guys, for your parents for sharing their beautiful children with us tonight. This is exactly what is offered by them. This is beautiful. So thank you so much for sharing them with us. We have some awards and recognitions. And if you would like to stay and join us in that, if you would. And then after that, we have a brief announcement that we would love to share with you. So we hang time for a few minutes to see what does give recognition and then if the announcement makes really good impact, thank you.
This man is really excited. So as you know, the district has worked for the last forty years to create and institutionalize our vision for what it means to lead the EC way, which we talk about often, powered by people, strengthened by systems, and driven by results. Every month, we give our principals a very difficult task to get with their leadership team to identify one staff member who embodies those qualities and characteristics of the identified pillar that we're looking for for that particular month. And so this month, we're really excited because what happens is we have twelve campuses. Those twelve campuses send their nominees to us. And then one employee, remember, we have over seventeen hundred employees across the country. Only one gets selected each month to be awarded. So it's with great honor that we would like to recognize an employee, a teacher, who is powered by people because she builds positive relationships with all of her students and other stakeholders across the campus. At this time, we would like to recognize Brianna Garcia from Legacy Middle School. This is going to be a couple of pictures, but we're not saying yet. Everyone just show.
Brianna Garcia, to me, I think, thanks for her exceptional commitment to Legacy Middle School. She attended summer leadership training and has shown unwavering dedication to the road, her team, department, and school. Through the coaching academy, she has fostered a more environment for both teachers and students thrive. Her ability helps strong relationships and energy and concern for her campus and the East Central community to make her now a state role model. And the absence of the math department, she had to step up to lead them to further demonstrate her leadership and dedication.
She has an amazing family with her as well. With her family, please also stand. We would love to recognize you as well. Thank you. All right, next up. In the East Central Independent School District, safety is our number one priority. On September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, East Central High School became one of the countless and unnecessary victims as well known as a swatting call. The caller claimed that he was a student on the campus and intended to do harm to other students. Realistic sounds were played in the background during the call that meant an act of violence on campus. The campus immediately went into a lockdown and reports with the standard response protocol. And immediately, the East Central Police Department began to take swift action. Without hesitation and within seconds of the caller hanging up, our officers were on campus searching. These men and women acted with bravery and did not hesitate to enter the building in an effort to keep our students and staff safe. Quickly, all of our partnering agencies from Barrett County Sheriff's, San Edward Marshals, Chinatown B C P D, El Salvador P D, and La Verena P D, and many others began arriving, executing our well-rehearsed and drilled unified command. Within a matter of minutes, the entire seventy-four acres was swept multiple times, deemed to be all cleared, and it was a hoax. We would like to just commend and recognize the East Central Police Department and Chief George Dranowski for their courage and willingness to go directly into the parade without hesitation and regard for their own lives, but that for the lives of their students and staff. Chief, can you come forward, please? This is going to be a couple of pictures and a second few more things. Chief, just one more thing. We want to thank you for cultivating these strong partnerships with our local law enforcement agencies. Because of these partnerships, we were able to execute and orchestrate a unified command which strengthens our presence during times of crisis. We know without a doubt that if a campus in ECIC were to face the worst day imaginable, that our East Central Police Department would be there to take the action. So thank you, Chief, for your leadership. We really appreciate it. All right, is there any standing attendants?
Yes, Mr. Thomas is going to provide the board committee with a quick bonding thing. As the community is aware, you know, with the rapid growth and development of the community, the community has supported the construction of its traditional schools in twenty twenty-two. Also, this November, the community will have the opportunity to consider some additional approvals for some additional campuses to respond to what the community. So this would be our twenty-two construction campaign. And we're moving right along, right on time, and pretty excited about the progress that's been made. So Mr. Thomas, turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Good evening. We're going to go ahead and start with Highland Forest. As you can see, most of the building is clean on the outside. We've got the flooring done as well. We're working on plumbing fixtures, insulation right now, as well as the sidewalks outside. The refrigeration, the RTU on the top of the building has been started up. So we'll start doing some of the finish out work in the interior of the building. We're anticipating to have this building completed into our, we're going to own it in assembly. So we're well ahead of schedule. Oh, press. As you can see here, we've got the building up, continuing to do the framing and sheeting on the outside. We're doing the above ceiling work, which gives the plumbing fixtures, the electrical, things of that nature, as well as the ductwork for the HVAC. And the circle there in the back, you'll see on the big picture, has actually been paved this last week. So that is a parent pickup circle there in the back. So this is coming along this month and is on schedule. Our Little School, you can see the site there of the big picture. We've got four hundred-plus piers actually completed. So we've got the majority of the piers replaced right now. Mud slap will be finished by the thirtieth of this month. So that's that base, the slab that you'll see there. And then now we're laying the slabs themselves. Each week, we're doing an additional slab. We have a fourth floor. So this one again is on schedule. In addition to that, we're working on stabilization of the football field. So we'll keep that in line. In addition to these, we've got South Elementary School. We've completed a hundred percent of the documents on it. It's going out to subcontractors right now, getting numbers back on that. As well as CTE is actually in the city San Antonio's purview for permitting. And then we're going to get back to the account so that we can start seeing construction up there. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you so much for that update. And I just, I just want to say a few words that thank you all for staying and listening to that. These facilities are for our students, our current students, the things that are going to be renovated that are in bad shape. And then, of course, we're growing by weeks and bounds, and our job is to provide facilities to educate students. So we appreciate y'all sticking around and listening to this important information. And if there's anything that we can provide for you, if you would like some information, any kind of pronouns, please don't hesitate to reach out to be happy, and we're happy to provide that for you guys. So we're going to take a short break and let y'all go home and have dinner and do homework and all that good stuff. And I just want to thank you guys down there. It was an amazing experience. So the next item on the agenda is for the comments, for the family. So the next item is trustee reports?
You know, I've been super busy with the, so, but I did go to the football game, which was awesome. And it was just so exciting. The crowd was amazing. The team was amazing. They were on fire. So it was, Greg and I got to sit with my sister, and we cheered the hornets on. So it was very impressive that the team really played hard. It was a great game. So it was very impressive. That's it.
We're going to leave, guys. We're going to put the new pad, it's an obscure reaction scene, and I still have some figures to turn. So get off like you're supposed to.
Yeah, I'm busy. Just a couple of weeks. I've been hanging out with my trustee here. She has a lot of energy. I'm trying to keep up with her. She's got a lot of energy, but she drags me all around. This is over at St. Clair. This is St. Clair doing homecoming. That was, I think, a rock star day. That's my grandson and his teacher. And that's him on field doing homecoming day. And, okay, we went over to Harmony. And this is, they got into what they do. They're growing plants out there, and this is squash. And this is something that was really impressive. Also, they grew some watermelons also over there. And so these are some things they're doing in outdoors, learning something. They're not just out there playing around. They are, they are really learning and growing plants and learning how to do things. And that's a part of the nature of it. Oh, okay. Okay. I don't know where we're at here.
The first one, I, the captain, I did the three years up here. It was amazing. Like, we don't want to talk about the summer school days and how he goes game. The games and the fighting and the, I love, and I love all those plays that he would do. So that's how they do that. Go back up. Which best cast?
Okay, yes. Is this Cass? Yes, Ms. Jackson, we thank you for your time and showed us around some of the programs that you offer to students over there. I think I was really impressed with a young man that came around and that he was doing an interview with Mary I. So he kind of explained a lot of things and really showed us around. And I really appreciate his time and, Ms. Jackson, appreciate your time also. Right, okay. I think this is over to Harmony, I think.
On the left, yes, sir.
Yeah, we went over to Harmony, and we saw our music snack, brother, and Mr. Morales. They did it. They spent a whole hour with us. And I think that's to take and go around and show us and showcase the teachers and the things that they're doing. And we really appreciate them taking the time out. I think the front office staff who welcomed us and I don't know if it expressed it, but they really was excited to see us. And then, and I think over the left, I think that's the high school. You know, we did a lot of things with Ginger and the job that us be teacher. I think, okay.
Gareth to be.
Be our. But at this, we keep looking at the high school. Thanks a lot for your time also, showing us around. That's a big school, so that business was enough to be.
He said, where do you want to go? And I think it's back in the line itself, I suppose.
Right. But thank you also, you know. Okay, I think it's Harmony?
The left.
No, right. It is, that's, it's a horse tank, okay. Thank you so much, awesome, showing us around the school. We really enjoyed it. I saw some ex-students there. I saw from Sam Houston, I think, one of my students I saw. I didn't even know she worked over there. And the guy down at the bottom, I think he was a student with my son. But we, that's a beautiful school. Beautiful school. That's the first time I've been there. And we appreciate your time also, you know, to show us around also. And I think at the top, Mrs. Cozack and Mrs. Sting, am I right? At the top of there, okay. Oh, yeah, that's my, in the middle, that that was the teacher. All right.
But that room right there, if y'all ever been in tradition, and I hate to say that tradition is a pain in the ass, it's a little bit of a pain in the ass, but that room is where the, in the library, it's about the staircase in the library. So it's not all open to the.
Oh, yeah, the trunk.
Oh, that room, I could step in for an hour.
Oh, wow.
It's, yes, it has its separate state town. And then, so I, and then I'm a professor of media. And there'll be some car doors with kids. They showed us where the CTE building is. I mean, that's, that's the new, the new thing is going to be there. Like, they said they're zooming right through it. It's amazing. It's going to be done before we know it. Donuts with grandparents. So I ran to some right sideline up there. Some donuts, and then we ran to every of the new offices and heritage. What amazing things.
All right, it's tradition, all right. Yeah, we appreciate you also, Ms. Covert, showed us around your campus. And I tell you, it was really quiet. I mean, the last time I was there, you had kids everywhere. I know that you have to be really excited about taking some of those kids out of your school. I can tell the difference right away, you know, the homes, the teachers. Looked like everybody was in a specific situation.
Yeah, I tell you, kids are in each restroom.
Yeah. Yeah, I tell you. And we thank you also for your time and sharing with us also.
I had a video with my grandpa, Mr. Kane, of Coach Duffy. Duffy walked to the mound, and he was a lot of well. He wasn't really, he was supposed to, except for he got a lot of basketballs, and he had to go for those.
Yeah.
Someone's with me.
So I had the privilege of calling, taking my wife on a date. I was on football dates. This was the, was this homecoming?
This was like.
No, first game. That's what it was. Our first game. And we had the opportunity to see all the young people, and they played in the heart town. I think this was the Harlem game. And, man, they fought all the way and never quit. And just about, before we all came up a little short. We went over to Heritage Middle School and was voluntold to help. Now, just joking, but had the privilege of seeing one of my fellow CPS brothers there. And he had a table there that was used to kind of share all the programs and stuff that CPS offers. And then he had some of the material that I was really used to seeing and working with, gloves and all that. But saw a bunch of people and saw a lot of merchandise, people buying merchandise. They would, they would come up to me and ask me prices and stuff. But enjoyed that opportunity that we had there. This was one of my favorite events of FCA. I had the privilege of sharing God's word with these athletes. The attentiveness was awesome. And they were just fixated on, well, on God's word, I'll say, not me. I'm not very good at speaking with these guys. And then they had some chalupas too. I learned with teenagers, you feel, so calm, right? So they had just a great spirit about them. So they were able to share, just something that I've been able to do for thirty years now, and just something I adore doing. That hand there, I don't know what I was, like asking for bread or something. It looked like I'm a little puzzled, but. This was the homecoming parade. And my grandbabies usually go to this one, but they weren't able to come out with us. We went out and just, I did a bunch of waving. And my wife was in the group with Heritage, and she walked by, and I didn't know what she was doing. I don't know what I was, when I was watching, what, but she walked by, because I was like, where'd you go? Where are you? She said, I just walked right by you. Come on. So I was going to go. And then this was the homecoming. She called me with the, you know, the mother. She takes, she takes great pictures. And the picture, not the, what is that you're saying? Somebody else took it, and I said, well, it's good, because you're in it, but it's not near as good as your picture. But they pulled that game off. They really just were phenomenal. And again, never stopped with the heart that they have. You can see the love they have, the coaches, and the coaches have to win. You see that in the way that they play, play with their hearts. That little box there is over at the booster, booster club, athletic booster, booster club, where they sell the merchandise. And that box there, or the stamp, I should say, was made by the construction crew here in East Central. They did a great job. It's solid, folds up somebody like me. And they did a phenomenal job on decorating it that says, "We will win." So I wanted to say. So I wanted to say, give them a shout out, so thank you so much for bringing that to the boosters, athletic boosters. Then that brought back a lot of memories. Now, my wife had way more memories than I did of homecoming dances, cause I don't think I ever went to one. Probably working or too shy to go to one or one of the other. But I had an opportunity to go with her, we got to chapel alone, and we always liked taking pictures and being around the kids. Had a great time, wanted to say thank you so much to the PTA that put it on nicely, because it was a lot of work and a lot of effort. And we needed that, but to see the smiles and, and a great time, it was a great, good, clean time and fun that those people were able to have. It was just amazing, so shout out to them and hats off to them too. And appreciate us going to that and chapel. All right, that's it, I'm done.
Thank you. I just have a little thing I wanted to share and it's kind of been a little bit of a, um, narrative. They, you are in fortune contest that's going to be affiliated with the Tricolor to Health District here in Central City. And all the diabetes, you know, they know it's a national diabetes. My point is, I wanted to share this, there's a deadline of submission, but there's seventy to thirty. I know that we have persons that are involved in their careers and things like that, that might want to have an opportunity to do that. I need to go through all of the qualifications, I mean, this is important to them. But if we have the students that might wanna be interested in that. And then the next one is, I know it seems like a long way off, but the annual Martin King Youth Art Contest just opened up this week for submissions and the deadline for that is October fourteenth. And it gives the qualifications for that, but it's certainly been tools that, you know, look at different ways to celebrate the arts and what that is and that kind of thing. So it is, I'll leave this one to the board, so I got. And we have some great and talented art people here and just another way to show, and I need to show some shine.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bill and everybody that shared their time and they sent it to the council district. The next item is item seven, superintendent reporting, seven point four goals updated to the staff.
And Madam President, trustees, at our last special board meeting, indicated that we need to try something different. In the interest of really reacting towards long-range goals, renewed focus on student outcomes. We are really excited to begin cadence of bringing information to the board about the progress that we're making and the opportunity we have to still continue to adjust. We felt like having that conversation regularly throughout the year was more beneficial to all of us as we really, really press towards achieving those aspirational long-range goals. Before we get into the data though, I wanted the team to provide the board an overview of the, with regard to improvement student outcomes, the long-range systemic areas that we're focusing on, as well as some of the short-term immediate impact strategy. I'll turn it over, Ms. Joette Barnes.
All right, so we have our directors here, we have Jonathan Holber, Jennifer Casper, Amanda Holman, they're gonna present with me. So we're gonna start out with one of the big questions that we always wonder about, what are we gonna do to move video? That's the big question that everyone wants to know. And so I'm just gonna kind of go over this process that when we talk about the CG process, that's what it's built to do. When we talk about when we get data, whether it's star data, screener data, all data, all types of data, we look at that and we say, what are the needs of the campus and what's, what are the needs of the district? And then once we determine what the needs are and really dig into the data, then we say, okay, what are some of the goals that we're gonna come up with? And one of the things to keep in mind is that every campus is different. So every campus, they're gonna have different needs, they're gonna have different goals. And they do this work with a team of people, core group. And then it goes into now, what are our strategic activities that we're gonna do? The big thing to keep in mind is that when we're looking at the goals, that's something that y'all have the opportunity to improve, right? And then now when we have our strategic activities, we now have basically our campus improvement plan, AKA our CG plan, continuous growth, which y'all actually have too. So I want you to always remember, those goals and the plan drives our work for the year. So when you say, what are you doing, every campus has their plan. And now they're monitoring and they're adjusting it, cause some things may work and some things might not. But that's the point of it, is to look at it and as a team, we say, what are we gonna do to shift it to make sure that we hit the goal? So even though we have this process in place, we're gonna have the opportunity just to kind of go over something more of a high-level overview. But I just wanna encourage you that the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plans, those are the answers as long as we're using them to guide our work. So we have ten focus areas that we're gonna jump into today. We have capacity development, monitoring and adjusting, behavior and discipline, comprehensive case management, curriculum instruction, the teacher incentive allotment, advanced academics, post-secondary readiness, partnerships, and school relationships. So when we think about capacity development, that's some of our core work, right? So we think about how are we gonna build capacity from the staff at central office all the way down to the campus level? Because we know if we're better as adults, we're gonna have a higher or better impact on the student outcomes. So we think about even now, so our instructional specialists at central office, what are we doing to make sure that they're equipped to help our teachers at the campus? And then what also are we doing to help principals? What are we doing to help assistant principals, right? This is part of our core work that's built in all of our systems that we do. But I wanna lean into a little bit on leading the EC way. Leading the EC way, y'all have heard it, we present on it and recognize people. It's basically our leadership definition that we live by. And so leading the EC way has provided clarity on how we should operate, what behaviors should we display. So for example, one of the things that I focus on with our leadership team and at central office is being more data informed. We need to know where students are, be able to say what the needs are and how we're gonna be able to respond. So we really focused on that, but the leadership definition has guided us in that work. So that happens district-wide to where we're constantly reflecting, saying, oh, I, I might be really good at this, but I might be struggling in being data informed, but this is important so that I can be an effective leader. But when we talk about a leader, we're not talking about a type of leader, everyone's a leader in the district. So we're encouraging you from central office down to principals, assistant principals, all the way down to teachers and teacher leaders. So this is some of the work that we engage in and it's ongoing. And from the year that we started all the way until now, we see improvement in mindset and how we operate.
So once you have those great plans, you wanna monitor those plans and see how they're doing, and if you just want someone to like. And one of the big changes this year that we're trying to do is help the board see where we're at and the districts see where we're at. Down to the campus levels, and campus leaders now, down to teachers, and all the way down to individual students. And so what you see, there's a picture of our impact dashboard, a part of the impact dashboard. That's something that we stood up last year for the first time. We did it from scratch, trying to help people visualize the data systems better. And we'll, we'll actually show you some of the data from that later on. So one of the things that we do is, once we have the good data on it, it helps us leverage the computer to calculate much more quickly, who are the individual students? So we know what your goal is, we know where you are, and then we can help you identify batches of kids to target to help fit more and more students over the goals. One of the things we did with monitoring and adjusting is we kind of looking at all the campuses. We do have support at six different campuses, where we have people, we have three different people split between those campuses, getting additional help and support and coaching for our principals. And we're gonna be a little bit more familiar with some of these tools as we stand up more and more systems and share a little more data with the campus. Behavior, discipline, whenever I think about behavior, I think about like the proactive side, like teaching before they get in trouble. And then disciplines like after they got in trouble. What we have there are two big things this school year, with cell phones and the dress code. And so we know that we got tighter, we love those systems, trying to help everybody follow the new guidelines that you guys are very familiar with. So we knew we would see a little bit of a spike at the secondary level support discipline code. And you see a little screenshot there where, one of the things we were looking at is, how did we do this year compared to the same time last year? So in that chart, you can see that at the end of the sixth week, McCon Valley had had five office referrals. And you say, well, is that, is that good? You say, well, last year they had sixteen at the same point in time. And so they had twenty-six percent, twenty-six percent, eighty, eighty, okay. That twenty-eight percent, the number of referrals that they had last year, so we can see that significant reduction. Our goal had been a thirty percent reduction, and that's why the seventy-two percent reduction in referrals there. Overall, as a system, whereas seventy-six percent of the number of referrals, that's a twenty-four percent reduction. Our goal for the year is to be at thirty percent. So over the same time last year, we made a lot of progress, but we're not quite there yet. Comprehensive management, so we've been working for a lot of years, trying to get, whenever a student has challenges, trying to get all of those at the same time. We know that if a kid's hungry or they have issues going on, that they may not, maybe not be able to get their best attention and learning. So we try to address all of that at one time. The big, the big move over the last twelve months was that awareness we got with communities and schools. So we have clinicians working with good students, so it was really a great way to supplement that work. Try and make sure that we have, basically involve our kids in that, so that we can break things and help them get that access to learning and strong teachers at the end.
There's some interesting pictures up there as they relate to curriculum instruction. So if you think about things like hospitals, energy management, power plants, and even the internet. As a society, we expect them to operate at a hundred percent capacity all the time. Like, it is not okay if they're at ninety percent capacity. So we're taking that same approach with curriculum instruction. We want to make sure that they, all of our systems are highly reliable. And to do that, we're gonna redo Spirit of the Week. One of our key things here is making sure that every single student in every single classroom has access to bond regable curriculum and materials every single day. So part of that work involves getting those materials, training teachers on how to use those materials. And when our students get a little bit short, helping teachers fill those gaps so that they can make sure that students can access and read those materials on regable. We do that, how long is on regable? In addition to that, we're offering some differentiated support. So depending on what those campuses need, we talk about our principals by the rules and find out exactly what's going on. And we need to send a specialist to a campus for three days out of the week to help, you know, in whatever capacity that's fine. One of our directors needs to go and make sure we're in a new leadership, someone that's in a leadership role routine or having a facilitator. We kind of have all hands on deck approach, making sure that we're taking care of that. And also include some external reports or supports, Jonathan talked a little bit about, you know, awareness, things like that. And some of our campus supports are only with those six campuses. We also have the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, providing some supports at all eight of our elementary campuses. And that can include classroom observations, academic teacher supports, and planning, training, leadership support, all of those. And teacher incentive allotment is actually a TEE funded initiative that pays teachers additional money for student achievement. And so we've been part of this planning cohort for several years. And this is the year that we'll have our data submission and we actually start actualizing. And so teachers will have the capability to earn up to twenty-two thousand extra dollars a year based on their student achievement and how they're meeting those goals for the campus. So right now, we're going to sell, and then our start test regables and all that is continued throughout the future.
Can you hear me? Are you listening again? So we have been working over the last couple of years to really increase our students' access to advanced academic programs. We mentioned over summer, towards the end of last school year, that we were really proud to announce that over fifty percent of our middle school students are now today currently enrolled in advanced academic courses, whether it's honors, humanities, Alpha One, pre-biology. Obviously, we still continue our Alpha One for All for eighth grade, so all of our math content going forward, stage three, third is an advanced level. And we're significantly increasing the number of students seeing biology in eighth grade, which is also a advanced course for them. We've also added a couple of new partnerships this year. For the last two years, we've got Texas State and San Antonio for dual credit enrollment for both our T Tech and Cassidy High School. And we added Carrollton State University as a partner for dual enrollment courses for some of our students who weren't quite college ready yet, but still wanted to get the college experience, the college experience in the dual credit course. And that's a little bit lower stakes course for the students in that at the end of the year, they can actually decline at the college level credit and only get the high school credit if they don't get the grade that they're hoping for. So they're still exposed to the same level of rigor as the college level course. They still get to see that they can actually achieve, but it gives them that flexibility to actually not accept the credit. So we're really excited about this. So moving into post-secondary readiness. We have been really pushing very hard on our two fantastic high schools to get our number of students who are ready for a college career in military, once they leave us and walk across the stage to get to that one hundred percent of our students. And so when we look back at the data in 2023, we had only thirty-six percent of our students that were walking across the stage, reading up as indicators. If you remember, we talked to at the end of the school year last year about our big push, at the end of the third quarter, we recognized that about forty-three percent of our students were sitting at that, that level. And we're happy to announce that at the end of the school year, once everything was finished and everything settled down, we're at eighty-one percent. Our goal for this year is to have eighty-eight percent. We're, we're around forty-four right now, and I think Jonathan will talk a little bit more about that. But some of the things that we are currently in the process of engaging in was our senior right now is our first ever post-secondary symposium. That will take place October second and third. We'll bring every school, East Central High School and Cassidy High School senior to the performing arts center. Throughout the day, they'll spend two days learning from industry partners, engaging with industry partners, hearing from post-secondary institutions, completing their applied taxes accounts for their college applications and their FSA IDs for financial aid. So we have a lot of really great things coming up for them. We also have the majority of our students enrolled in the college prep English class and the college prep math class. So those students, we know, like they walk out of our doors, they are prepared to enter food, volume math, being English versus the college of the year. And then partnerships, we've been working, you guys are aware, with the system of grade schools. We're being ready to have our kickoff with them early next month. And so as we continue to really form that partnership with system of grade schools, we are always gonna be looking at taking a quality seats analysis, which we bring to you in our shoulder, to look at what goal actually we're taking at our campuses to make sure that we are significantly improving the number of quality seats that are available to our students across the district. That's all through movements of the continuous growth that Joette we talked about just a little while ago. And then those long-term and core circles that we have of getting our students to that college where readiness and being prepared to enter to the world after us. And that kind of ties directly into our schools innovation. So we had really been using the term school of choice. But as we bring all our middle school online with us for the next couple of years, through the system of grade schools and our school action program, we are kind of shifting that leadership schools of innovation because those are bold actions that we can take to make sure that these seats available at these schools are high-quality and really providing the level where we want all of our students to have. These are also really great schools that we can incubate great ideas and innovation and then push those ideas that are highly successful out for our campus as well.
So I've had a chance to walk you through a little bit more data and do some updates. And each month, we'll be a little bit, we'll learn a little, build deeper with you. So one of the things is I'm gonna walk you through the status of long-term goals, remember we set some long-term goals. And I want you to think about those going to be ambitious goals and not something that would be likely at the beginning of the school year, we've already been tracked for, right? So I'm just gonna show you kind of where we maybe already are, some examples of where we start some work to do and that. I'm gonna go into a couple of our, our big goals, your, you got an achievement goal. I'm going to go into a couple of our big goals. You've got an achievement goal and attendance goal. And maybe a little update on how we're doing there. Each of those that I feature, I'm going to give you some bright spots. And then I'm going to do a little bit about why and some things that are going on. And then you go over and maybe some hotspots and some stuff that you can say helps and work here. So looking at those long-term goals, we do have a goal to get forty-five percent of our students this school year. So longer term, it's going to go down, but for this school year, forty-five percent of our eighth graders, which is a year earlier than those places. And we don't have anybody on track for that one yet. Looking at our college, career, and military. So with the seniors, it's a little bit tricky. You have to pay very careful attention. On the state's definition, like Dr. Holden talked about before, it's college, career, or military ready. But we set a more ambitious goal. It was to be college and either career or military ready. And so currently, we don't have any yet, but that's a number that goes up over time. And so the and there, actually, we have that number up to forty-four percent. So our current status is to be or. And so you kind of get a sense that we're we're starting to get the names more than ever before at this point in the year. And then we have a similar goal for our juniors. So we want to get forty-seven percent of our juniors to be college, career, or military ready. And we already heard the seniors are at forty-four percent. And our juniors really don't get, you don't really get started on college readiness until, or at least the juniors. So we're just kind of getting that term started for that year. Okay, so what we do have some spots, we're already seeing places on track. And so we'll highlight attention a couple of those. So in fifth grade math, the goal is forty-three percent overall. And Oakcrest fifth grade math, which typically is a real bright spot in our achievement, they're already at fifty-seven percent coming in the testing. And so that's a really important thing to have to do with college. Looking at third grade literacy. So I want you to see this one. And Forest has really been, like their literacy has been shooting up the last couple of years. And they, I don't know if you've seen a number like that recently. They're all the way up to fifty percent. Honor is at thirty-nine percent. And our campus, McConville, McConville is a really good market on their early literacy. And so they didn't play no long game and say, hey, look, we're not, we're on B yet. And so we're going to work on those early grades. And so that's a real, that's a real great powerful celebration to see McConville U. Reading our ambitious goal for this school year already is so great. So if you're looking at fifth grade literacy, so fifth grade is definitely a really strong point in our system. We actually have five schools on track. Now, the goal really is literacy and math, but I broke it out for now. Okay, is that what this exists? So I broke this one out into two separate goals. So Tradition, Sinclair, Oakcrest, Honor, and Forest are all already on track to meet that ambitious goal for us. So we have a couple arms. So there's three of them I'm going to highlight today, which is kind of digging a little bit with you on. We've got one around attendance, where we want to get ninety-four percent attendance for the year. One of your goals will run at forty percent reduction in discipline. And then this one gets a little bit worrying, but what I want you to notice is that we're trying to get seventy percent of our kids to approaches. Thirty-five at the, that's half team, by the way. And then twenty percent of masters and eight-eight percent of our kids, college, career, or military ready. Okay, so we're going to dig in with these. And I'm going to pull up the attendance numbers. So the goal for the year is ninety-four percent. So ninety-four percent. Now, attendance doesn't usually go up throughout the year, right? Everybody comes to the first, we can see all right, they're phenomenal attendance. Okay, so our current status is ninety-four point seven. So that's good news. But what we like to look at, and the way we do it on the dashboard, I want you to see, we look at how it's improved or like what's changed from the same time last school year. So a tenth of a percent is really big on attendance. And so what I want you to see, I'm not going to read them all to you because that list is kind of long, which is a great celebration. But I am going to read off those top couple. So a one and a half percent increase on attendance at Hunt Forest is really profound. Like that's profound. Eastern High School is also over a full percent. That's really amazing. I don't want to minimize the other ones, but again, I'll be here all night if I read every, read every single piece that we're given. But what I want you to see is lots of schools are up. In addition to that, what I want you to know is that we targeted students. We have targeted lists of kids, and we said, look, we're going to get them with communities and schools, and we're going to work with these kids and try to interrupt before they become chronically absent. That's that word I keep using, chronically, the kids who keep missing school. Is we targeted kids that were on the verge. And that of those, we targeted eleven out of twelve campuses. And they decreased the attendance for those kids. And so that's, we're seeing really nice positive impact already from that. And then we do have a hotspot for your attendance. We do have one campus that's down. And so Sinclair is down seven percent. They can even rely and move it up with targeted kids. We have literally a custom list for every campus of kids. That was at work, I think I described to you previously, where we've been working with Harvard. They really like your school recruitment process, and they want to partner with us. And they gave us some ideas to target, and stuff, and fantastic. And then Mr. Harvey was kind enough to share some of the things that they're doing. And so a number of times in my presentation, I'm going to be talking about stuff. And it's not, I'm not necessarily the expert. I'm not necessarily the expert on everything. I have a big Sinclair, but I have a PR crowd, and I won't read everything on there. But I wanted you to see, I guess, there's some of the things that they're doing at Sinclair. Because if you know Mr. Harvey, he's, I mean, if he wants to make an impact, he's looking at things and he's saying, hey, but I want to weekly mountain do this thing. I'm using talking boards to communicate with families. I've got challenges. I've targeted hotspot days and I've done interesting things. So he's got a number of things he's doing to help us target any difference. We're going to go over the discipline, maybe the same thing for you. So we want thirty percent production, another discipline. And we're currently at a nineteen percent production as a district. So nineteen percent. So we're making progress, but we're not quite there yet. Another way of saying is that we get eighty-one percent of referrals from last year to our university person. If not, don't worry about it. Just know that we're, we're making progress, but we're not there yet. So looking at discipline, some of the things that we're seeing is that we're monitoring discipline data at a much higher rate. So we're trying to, like I described before, get to the district level campus leadership, all the individual students. And that monitoring, I think, is having a positive impact. I think that's part of what we're seeing. We did have that tighter dress code and cell phone policy that I was referencing. What I want, I want to say on that is I think that initially it caused a little bit of a spike, especially at our high school in those areas. I think that that's a natural thing as we get a little tighter with the rules. You might see a little more enforcement and a little bit higher numbers. I'll show you what happened to the numbers on that a little later. So what we've been working on is getting more preventative. Earlier, I described behaviors like preventative, like teaching before they get in trouble. And so we've really been working on that system, getting really clear expectations posted. Any campus, our goal was to make sure that every campus had that posted clearly wherever you went first day of school. And so that's the, that's the clearest we've ever had the first day of school in our system. We had targeted PD. We looked at specific campuses that maybe had higher numbers or had, like Honor, you know, because a new campus with some new leaders. We gave them specific extra help to make sure that they are off to a great start. And then we increased our coaching with our coordinator, social emotional development, that ORCs, those behavior systems. So some bright spots. So reductions. We've got a big list of reductions. So we're looking for a thirty percent reduction. I put cast on there at twenty-nine, so they didn't quite get to thirty, but still, I mean, I was pretty good in studying all of this. But Heritage, Honor, Harmony, McConville, Sinclair, Oakcrest, all are beating or exceeding the goal. Oakcrest was one of the lower ones last year, and it still managed to reduce it by ninety percent, by ninety percent. That's really impressive. I want to call attention to three campuses. There's Salado, McConville, and Hunt Forest. They have super low numbers of referrals. Like I'm talking about five or less for the whole year. So while you don't see Salado at the top, you don't see, I believe, Hunt Forest up at the top. It's not because they aren't doing amazing work. It's that if you had three referrals last year, it's really hard to reduce it. Does that make sense? Like please play a percentage game. You can have some numbers to reduce it. As the year goes on, I think we'll be able to see that a little bit more clearly. But I think, I think we do know the numbers. I just want to give a shout out and acknowledge the very things they're doing. Similar, what we do for attendance, we have targeted kids. We started the year and said, here's some kids that last year struggled. And so we targeted those kids, and eleven out of twelve campuses received a reduction of those kids. So comparing the last year, there's a reduction. So that's great news. It seems like it's largely working. Now, our hotspot is Eastern High School. They did increase twenty-five percent. But like I said before, I want you to think about it. They were just being a little tighter. So previously, earlier weeks, they were up forty-five percent. They were up thirty-seven percent. But what you see is it's coming down. And so I think it's something I want to keep an eye on. And next month, we can do an update to see where they're at. But if they keep going like they are, we should see that number coming down to where they were. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll start to see it reduce as the year goes on. So I think, I think they've been really deliberate and intentional in that work. But to me, that's the hotspot. It's the, it's the biggest thing that we've seen. And then that's, that's obviously is our biggest campus, right? And those students, that's what's keeping our overall number a little high for now. And we'll jump into achievement a little bit for you. And so remember, there's four things we're looking at. Approaches at seventy, beats at thirty-five, masters at twenty, and we'll be at CCMR. Our current reality with our literacy, we have not seen numbers that high before. And so this is unusual. I have spent many hours verifying the data, running correlations on it, and looking for, like, is there something that I did?
And that's how I'm off the ledge earlier.
I was like, I don't know what happened. The kids left that learning level. They came back even higher than they, I like, I don't know. I don't know. I can't fully explain it. Something I want to keep an eye on throughout the year, something else that's acknowledged. But if you just look at literacy compared to overall goal, literacy is our strength. It's stronger. It's, it's me, the first few parts of the goal, and we just never see, and it's like third to fourth grade went up, sixth to seventh grade went up. So it's not like what we did in elementary grade or what we did in middle grade. It's like almost everybody in our system is usually up. And so that's, that's a great thing. It's nice to see. But I want you to see there's math is lower. As long as I can remember, Eastern Math has been our bigger challenge. We haven't focused high on those. It's not moving as quickly. It didn't have a magic really increase like it's been. It is slightly higher, slightly higher than what we saw previously. And then Dr. Holden mentioned that forty-four percent on CCMR. And I want to put that in context. Am I saying it correctly? That quarter three ended and we were at twenty-three percent? And so we're, we're about twenty-one percent higher than we were at the end of Q three last year. And so the plan is to get so much stronger, and we're hitting it down, running. And we're expecting to see a huge increase in CCMR numbers. And then a little bit of highlights, some bright spots. Can we say that that CCMR, all being so far ahead is a great thing. And credit to last year's VCH best team and this year's team and past as well, right? All of the hard work that we put in, CCMR department, all the great things they're doing. Island Forest, they're reading their math. It's continuing to go up and up. Brittany keeps calling me and saying, hey, when are they going to, when are they going to let us release state accountability? Because, you know, every metric we have says that they're going up. And she's, she drove a crowd amongst the community to have that pride and see the great things that they've done. So she's giving Brittany. But it's, thank you for the hard work and the effort that you guys have given. I don't want to lose sight of this one. McConville K two literacy. Okay, so I mentioned earlier, they really invested there. When you look at K two as a whole of literacy, the highest performing campus at the beginning of the year was McConville. That's, yeah, that's a wow. That's a, that's a real change. That's, that's, that is incredibly hard work and some really amazing people doing great work over there that, that did that work. What we've seen is that their third grade results, like the third graders started this year much higher than what we've seen in a long time. And it's because of this third of literacy. Because they're doing so well, we keep becoming so comfortable there. And so that's a story I want to keep an eye on this year. Some more celebrations. I won't read the whole line to you, if that's okay. I'm going to say Heritage was a top student reading. Island Forest, very strong. It's Honor, very strong. It's Legacy and Tradition. Those, those guys go really, some bright spots in literacy. Coming down to math, Heritage, really across the board, their math. You saw Oakcrest fifth grade math and numbers. They have year in, year out, phenomenal things. And then probably the highest performing group in any subject in the grade level in the district. And they are again, to be continued here. And fourth grade has been a little bit of a challenge for us. And so I might go point out, Island Forest's fourth grade was unusually high on math. And so that's, that's an interesting thing to keep an eye on. I'm going to pop over. While I'm already seeing this, we talked a little bit about it in the last presentation, so it's going to be, it's going to be overlapped. But I think those rigorous home regal materials, they have all the acronyms and education. You love H G line in this, and Sabastin amplified this, and we did that. Well, what I'm saying is we've given our teachers better materials that help them more easily get our kids to perform on level than ever before. We've done a lot of work on instruction strategies. I won't give you the long version that would take, you know, a week. But I'm going to give you like a snippet and just say, we've been working on scaffolding. And so if you think about like trying to do some construction, something you might have scaffolding, which helps you kind of access that higher level. So some of our kids come in, they don't know everything. They don't know all the prerequisites that we want to know. The scaffolding helps them still access the on their level material, so we can help them grow those gaps. And so we've been working a lot on how to do that. Targeting students is something that I've mentioned a couple of times. We're going to keep here and stop about that. We're trying to take the computers, the data, whatever, monitor at a level, get all the way down to the kid. Be like, here are some kids. Let's monitor them. Let's change, let's change the trajectory. Jennifer has talked about N I T and how our partnership with that organization in training leaders and teachers and training those leaders and teams. We give feedback on planning, operation, and feedback. But anytime you get a national organization with reputation like theirs, it's a, it's a great opportunity for us. And we do want to raise knowledge that we think that's part of this success we're having. Hotspots in achievement. We saw the math was definitely lower than the literacy, right? And so I want you to see that as a whole. And our literacy K two, they kind of go in bands, like the red band. It's like there's five groups. The red band's like the bottom, twenty percent. So it's really that, that lowest group of, of students. We have, we have more students in that bottom group than we want. And that's, that's really our issue is the higher groups tend to be pretty well out. But we're getting, assuming kids kind of stuck in early literacy. And we've done a lot of our, our literacy initiatives, reading academy and all the things, and the new curriculum, trying to have that decoding, all the best practices in literacy that we're coming. But it's, it's still, it's still a hotspot for us at the lowest performers in K two literacy. And so kind of just close, I can spend a lot of time sharing data with you, but I love to do that one of these other things. So I'm just going to say thank you for the support. I love that you guys want more data. I want to be engaged in it. And we appreciate the opportunity to share some of the things that we've learned.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, you know, I'm always complaining about not having that today. So this is the cool snapshot of what's happening right now in real time. And I absolutely adore that. I do. I just thank you so much for that always. A lot of hard work that you guys do, but this gives us an actual visual of what's happening. So gosh, thank you so much for that. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Molly. Thank you.
So we can, we think that you guys have, we're going to continue to provide this each month. And if you can't, we'll be standing in the gym. I will just provide that update tour. And we'll have some contact month to month of the things that we're, we were concerned about this month and the things we adjusted or have an impact next month and so on, so.
It's still like real time, you know? Something that's what bothers me so much is we get information after the fact.
Yeah, so we've been talking, we've always talked about the review there isn't as helpful. This is an opportunity to look for the relationship together, really, to know what's going on and what's, what investment.
And you see there's excitement, and I know it's contagious. And so we get conference, and I feel like what you were saying, yeah. It's like, we're, you know, each month, we feel we're living in an opportunity to get creative, exciting, and seeing that learning can be fun as well as challenging. But yeah, for the best, still, everybody's always involved in it. I think that's it. I love that. Me too. Me too.